Good evening and thank you so much for joining us. My name is Lisa Bonnington. I am the new president and CEO of the Martinez Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau. And the Chamber is your host for this evening along with Campbell Theater, a lovely venue. Please help me welcome Alan Wang to the stage.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. I'm very honored to be here. First of all, I'd like to give you a description of the districts. Running for District One will be Nikania Allen and Jay Howard. Martinez District Council Number One is bordered by Highway Four to the south and the Martinez waterfront to the north, Carquina Straight Regional Shoreline Park to the west, and the Martinez Refineries to the east, with the southern portion of the district including a few residential areas along Pacheco Boulevard and Estudio Street. District Four candidates will be Debbie McCullough and Ben Thoreau. District Four is bordered by the north, by Highway, bordered to the north by Highway Four, to the south and west by Alhambra Valley, to the east by the city of Pleasant Hill, and along Alhambra Avenue. So there you have it. That's District One and District Four. Our candidates tonight will are, as I mentioned, Nikania Allen, Jay Howard for District One, District Four candidate Debbie McCullough, and District Four candidate Ben Thoreau. Let's start off with our opening remarks, starting with Nikania Allen.
Hi, my name is Nikania Allen. I am a longtime resident in Martinez. By trade, I'm a veterinary technician. I loved that for me. I am now a mom of a five-year-old with special medical needs. I have been heavily involved in the community and the town's politics for the last few years. I have been pushing for issues that affect our lives, like policies that affect our lives that are relevant to us today. Safety is another thing that I'm really passionate about. Sorry, I'm so nervous. But we're gonna keep going. Yeah, so I am also a member of the Community Advisory Board of Contra Costa. I have been for the last two years. I am a strong advocate for the community, and I've used my voice to make sure that the ARD-PY committee represented the people in the city that it was supposed to. I have a very strong history of being reliable and being unafraid and being bold, and I feel like that's what we're looking for right now in Martinez. Thank you.
Council member candidate for District One, Jay Howard.
Hi, like you said, my name's Jay Howard. I'm a third-generation Martesian, very involved in this community. I serve on the Board of Directors for Loaves and Fishes, where we serve 1,600 meals a day throughout Contra Costa County. I'm also on the Board of Directors for the Martinez Historical Society, where I'm sure you've seen, we got the museum painted and fully restored. It's absolutely gorgeous. That's part of the reason I decided to get involved in my community and to run for office. I'm also on the Board of Directors for the Northern California Carpenters, where I represent 38,000 carpenters from Fresno to Oregon. That also means that I'm responsible and part of running a 229-plus million-dollar budget every year for that, for the NorCal carpenters. That's where I think I really would, my skills would come in handy, helping out with Martinez. I'm a 45-year carpenter, and I manage high-rise remodels of Bank, for Bank of America. So what I'm good at is bringing people together in difficult, challenging jobs and bringing them in on time and under budget. I think that will go very far in helping to run the city of Martinez. I'm not doing this for money. I'm not doing this for glamour. I'm doing this to help my community. Thank you.
District Four candidate Debbie McCullough.
Hi, good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming to this very important candidate forum. I wish I would see this many people at a city council meeting. That would be wonderful. Even with the hybrid meetings, I don't think there's as many people attending our meetings as there is tonight. So for those that don't know me, I am a fourth-generation Martinez resident. My family came here years ago from Italy and from Sicily and from Portugal. They fish the waters here, and they gave to their community. They were, they were members of our community that gave, gave it themselves, and so they were my mentors. One of my relatives started the Boys and Girls Club years ago. So I'm very inspired by my personal family history, and that's what compels me to continue to serve on the city council and do the best that I can. In the memory of my family that lived here, I have family that's, you know, buried in the soil of Martinez. So Martinez, to me, means something. And I've served on the city council now for, for eight years. I was vice mayor twice. And I wanted just to share with you some of my priorities. I'll also just let you know, I am a bulldog, so any bulldogs out there, woo-hoo, go bulldogs! But I wanted to share, because I've heard from the mayors earlier, so you know some of the accomplishments, but some of my priorities are centered around public safety. I currently am the interim chief of the Sheriff's Crime Lab. It delivers forensic services to all the cities and towns in Contra Costa County, so I understand the challenges of public safety. So law enforcement is my number-one priority. Oh, am I cut off already? Okay, I'll get back to it later. Thank you.
Okay. District Four candidate Ben Thoreau.
Good evening. Thanks to the Martinez Chamber of Commerce. Thank you all for coming out here tonight. My name's Ben Terrio, and I'm running for District Four for the city council. And I grew up outstate. I grew up in western Montana on the Flathead Indian Reservation. I'm a Native American man. You know, I've come a long way to, obviously, to be here tonight with you all. And I got, from a young age, a passion for law enforcement, which led me to the military police in the United States Air Force. I was a combat veteran in the Iraq War. And I landed in the Richmond Police Department, where I've been as a police officer for the past 14 years. Public safety is obviously extremely important to me, and public service is just as important to me as well. They're key tenants of my life, and I believe that service to others is one of the most important things that we can do. I live in Martinez with my daughter, and I have a strong background in management of resources and labor, human resources, and understanding how to get folks to do work that we need to done in this city. We have so many vacancies that need to be filled. We have so many promises that have been unkept. I'm here to represent folks south of Highway Four and also Martinez at large, ensure that those needed resources and those needed desires for our city are accomplished together. Thank you.
All right, let's start the questioning with Nikania Allen. Nikania, tell us about some of your contributions to the Martinez community, as well as areas you would focus on if elected.
Okay, thank you for that question. So I would consider myself a community organizer. I have been heavily involved in the city of Martinez, our quality of life, and I am quite known to the current city council because I was probably a thorn in their side in the community. So one of the things that I wanted to do is make sure that everybody felt represented in areas that people weren't represented in. I tried my best to bring us together, and the things that I will be focusing on continuously is our quality of life and our, our cultural diversity and making this town more cohesive and safe for all residents. Thank you.
Jay Howard, Jay Howard, tell us about some of your contributions and the areas that you would focus on if elected.
Thank you for the question. So some of the things I like to do in Martinez, I run a program called Carpenters Who Care, and we take union carpenters into the city, and we rebuild, much like I was speaking to before, the historical museum or low-income families' housing. That's a great resource because I have access to the carpenters and because I'm so involved in my community. Other things that I'd like to do, I'd like to make sure that, that we restore the downtown Martinez, as well as the four economic other areas, business areas in Martinez. I'm very concerned about Nob Hill and the closed businesses. I think we need to get the downtown Martinez. Although it's doing great, I still think there's quite a few boarded-up businesses. So that is something I think is very important in the future, to bring new businesses, bring new retail, bring new people into the economic areas. Thank you.
Debbie McCullough.
So my contributions to the city have served two terms as city council, and I wanted to share with you that, what my priorities were, because I was, I ran out of time earlier. So one of the things that I mentioned is public safety. To me, public safety is number one, and we're bringing on a new police chief. I had the honor of meeting him, and he's a very progressive, younger man, and I think he has a lot of potential for Martinez. We need to hire and retain police officers that are reflective of our community values so that they can police the community in a way that we feel is appropriate for us. Another thing that I wanted to bring up that hasn't been discussed is fire prevention. This is a very serious topic. It doesn't matter who you are or where you live. A fire is possible to come through Martinez, as we've seen in other parts of our city, I mean, other parts of our state, excuse me. And fire prevention, being able to have defensible space around your home, being able to have access points so that you can leave in vulnerable neighborhoods. We have neighborhoods in our city that are very vulnerable. They do not have easy access, and so we are looking at roads and paths to help these communities in the sense of a disaster, to be able to escape from their home. That will save people, property, and lives.
And Ben Terrio.
I'm a part of three different nonprofit boards, most of them that are focused on healthy youth lives. I think it's very important that we have very good programs in our city for youth lives and make sure that they stay on the right path. And I've been on a board of directors for, like I said, three different nonprofits to ensure that we carry that type of activity out. So that's, as a community advocate, that's something that I'm really a champion for, is understanding that our youth have opportunities, and I want to make sure we continue to have that here in Martinez. Things that I want to make sure happen, just very clear, I'm a police officer. Public safety, there's no one who understands how to do that better than myself. I do it every day. I'm actually be a police officer in the city of Richmond, right here when I leave here tonight. We have a staffing issue and staffing crisis in our city, and that is affecting services greatly. We need to get that back on track. We need to focus on economic development for the future and ensure that we do not become part of any type of recession or any other economic calamities that may befall us or befall the nation. We need to make sure that we have that type. I want to make sure that happens. Thank you.
And the next question is gonna be for you again, Ben, and we'll work our way down. So what are your views towards Martinez's housing situation, and what will you do as a council member related to housing?
Housing is the most, one of the most serious issues facing Martinez amongst economic development, but they go hand in hand. There's currently zero projects in development or slated to occur for housing. We have a goal that we must attain in the next eight years for over 1,300 units, either zoned or built. I prefer built. That's the only way we're gonna be able to climb out of this housing crisis and issue. And so we need to focus on ways to do that through vacant, vacancies in vacant lots. We need to focus on bringing development here to make sure that that happens. We don't need to give away Martinez's charm. Nobody wants to do that, but we have got to make some housing happen, and we can no longer avoid this. The thing we do not want to have happen, and the thing I fear the most, is losing local control, which is what will happen if we do nothing. So it's vehemently important that we achieve housing on scale that we need to, and that's required from us by the state, and I intend to make that happen.
Debbie McCullough.
Well, I agree 100% with what you just said. We need to find opportunities to build housing in Martinez, and we're doing that right now through our general plan and also through the housing element, which was just launched this past week. And we want input from the community. We want your ideas, and we want to see what you're gonna share with us, because maybe you can think of something that we haven't. So we are inviting everyone at our community workshops and our meetings to bring these ideas. But we already have ideas ourselves. We need to build out in certain areas where they have opportunity sites, particularly around transportation zones, where we can have more high-density housing that's good for seniors, for, for youth, people who, I've just got out of college, they don't have a lot of money, they need to have smaller units, and maybe they don't have vehicles. So we have an opportunity around our train station and in the downtown area to find sites where we can do more high-density housing that is based on transportation, and we have the prime areas to do that. But there's other opportunities. We've heard of accessory dwelling units and things like that. But we have 1,345 units to build within the next eight years, and we actually have to do this and have a plan forward in the spring of 2023.
Nikania Allen. Oh, Jay, sorry, Jay Howard.
That's okay. I appreciate the question. So can you repeat the question for me?
Sure, 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 absolutely. You would ask me that while I just turn the page on this thing?
I put you on the spot now.
Okay. Martinez area has, what are your views towards Martinez's housing situation, and what will you do as a council member related to housing?
Right, right. I really appreciate what Debbie was talking about. For me, it's, as a carpenter, one of the biggest things we need to focus on is measured growth, right? I think, also as an environmentalist, I think it's important that there's no ridgeline building. I think that's what sets us apart from cities like Arinda, Walnut Creek, they have housing all over the ridge lines. I think it ruins the quality of life. So I think it's important that we do figure out measured growth. Yes, we have 1,345 houses that have to go in, and that is gonna need to be done once we get the general plan, right? Because without that general plan, we're in trouble. All the mayoral candidates were talking about it earlier. That has to be in place to protect us from people coming in and pushing housing down our throats. So for me, again, it's measured growth. We need to make sure that we don't ruin our charm, we don't build on the ridge lines, and we protect our small-town environment. Thank you.
And now Nikania Allen.
Thank you. So I think it's really important to understand that the cost of living for a parent or a family these days completely different than it was 40 years ago, which is kind of where we still are with the plan for the town. I think it's also really important to build, but also build with low, lower income in mind. I know that when it comes to incomes, there's brackets and different things like that, but I feel like we need to definitely make sure that people are able to stay in a place where they're, that they love. We love the city, and it's affordable, but it's kind of moving away from that, so a lot of people have had to leave it, and a lot of people are considering leaving it. So we can come up with some very inventive and really good solutions to this.
Thank you, Nikania. This next question will be for you. We'll work our way down. Hiring a new police chief is an important near-term decision that the mayor and city council will be making. What will you be looking for when deciding who should become Martinez's new police chief?
Thank you for that question, and I have been so involved with, you know, equity and bias training, so I'm very familiar with the police department, so much so that the city, the current city council sent the person who is recruiting to me so that I could give them my ideas for the community and the type of person that we, we would do well with here. A lot of the things that I said were, you know, having a police chief that is willing to invest in the bias training, that's willing to have good relationships across the board with different communities, and also a police chief that is sensitive to the social needs that are, that's going on in the world and is able to reflect that in, in his leadership. So that was basically my input for it. So hopefully they did it, because it sounds like they have a new chief, so we'll see.
Thank you. Jay Howard.
I'm very excited about the new police chief. I think it's very important that, that he leads the, the police department. We've heard from everybody here that the police department is down eight sworn officers, almost at half-staffed, so I think he's, he's got to encourage the city of Martinez to help them with their compensation package. I'm very excited about getting them fully staffed. I think I have a great relationship with the outgoing police chief, and I look forward to working with the new one. Thank you.
And Debbie McCullough.
Well, Nikania, thank you for your input, and we did take that into consideration. Our police candidates went through three panels: the professional panel of police chiefs, the ARD-PY group, and then people from the community. And all of these three groups had separate individual panel interviews with the police chief candidates, and we have selected one. The actual selection is done by the city manager, who is currently the interim city manager, Mike Chandler, and so that has been shared with the community, or it's been shared with the council. And I got to sit and speak with him, and I wanted to ask him, what are your ideas? We need to retain and attract officers. We need to treat the community properly. We have challenges in Martinez where we have the hospital and the mental health department. We have the jail, and so our police officers encounter individuals that other cities and towns don't have to encounter, so they need to be able to have the resources, the education, and be able to treat these people respectfully, but also maintain our values. And he is, I'm confident that he is going to build the police department that will be reflective of our community values.
Ben Terrio.
Like I said, I'm a police officer, and I'm also a police union president in Richmond. I've helped hire police chiefs, I've helped fire police chiefs. It's very important that the police chief embodies the needs of the community, understands what community policing is, and how to effectively employ it. And then, as a police labor leader, it's also just as important for the chief to understand how staffing works, what, what drives people to be good police officers, and how we can retain and recruit those folks. I just, last week, signed a agreement with the city of Richmond to, for a contract to retain and recruit police officers. So I understand that very well, and I intend to hold any police chief, any department head accountable through the city manager, because we deserve that in this city, and it's vitally important that the policymakers, the city council, has input on who is policing our city and how they're policing our city.
Thank you, Ben. And the follow-up to that, Ben, is how do you view the city's current crime situation, and how would you address crime here in Martinez?
I think, like most places, there is, the fear of crime is definitely out there. I think there's a lot of crime that goes unreported. If you look at social media, a lot of people out there, quite frankly, you know, they understand that our police force, for example, is supposed to have five officers on a shift. Right now, they only have three. That's, we're at half, half-capacity. That's unacceptable, both for civilian and sworn employees. So the, the fear of crime is out there, and a lot of people understand that, that doesn't, the staffing issues that exist, and so they don't want to burden the government, and so they don't report it. And so I think that's kind of the big unknown that's out there, and we need to address that. We need to have community engagement and involvement. We need to ensure that all police officers are actually, you know, being proactive in the community and proactively ensuring that enforcement activity is being completed. That goes, obviously, hand in hand with the staffing, and that's why it's so important that we have a staff city, that we have a city manager who understands that, and that department heads understand that as well. All of those things can't happen, they can't trickle down to the ground policing of community policing and its vitality without that at the top.
Thank you. Debbie McCullough.
Can you just repeat that question again?
Yes. How do you view the city's current crime situation, and how would you address crime in Martinez?
Okay, so that's a little bit of a funny question, because I'm the crime lab manager for Contra Costa County, so I do all the forensic services for every city and town in Contra Costa County, so I'm very much aware of the crime in different neighborhoods and different areas across the county. I like to say Martinez, we don't have the same crime challenges that other cities and towns do, thank goodness, but we do have crime here. A lot of it is property crime and things along those nature, and that's very irritating for people, to have their catalytic converter broken, taken, or taken, having their home broken into, having their bicycles taken, all these things. So one of the things that I want to make sure is to hold people accountable, we need to have our officers trained to be able to collect evidence and present it so that we can hold those accountable. So I teach our officers, we have trainings almost every month at the crime lab, and I invite the Martinez officers in for continual education and training so they can do a better job actually out there on the street, so that we can be more engaged in how we address our crime in Martinez. Because if you don't hold people accountable, they'll continue to plague your community.
Jay Howard.
Yeah, I definitely agree with Debbie. I think there's a lot of property crime. I also think a lot of it does go unreported. I don't think we're in a very safe situation for our police officers, having them so understaffed, having only three on a shift. We're asking an awful lot of them right now. And again, I go back to, we need to get them a better contract, a more robust contract. Right now, they can go across the street into Pleasant Hill or other cities and, and get paid more money. And, you know, you wouldn't blame them for that. They're out there to try to take care of their family. Some of these officers are working 12-hour shifts, and I don't think it's right. So we need to get them longevity agreements, so that the longer they stay, the more of a bump they get to their, to their compensation package. And I think we really need to support them. I think they need to have mental health awareness professionals involved in, in their programs, too. Thank you.
Nikania Allen, how would you view, how do you view the city's current crime situation, and how would you address it?
Okay, so when it comes to how people feel as far as safety is concerned, it does vary across communities. I know for a fact, last year, there was a hate crime, and the year before that, there were several, and we never hear about those. So it was really important to me to make sure that members, you know, that are afraid are capable of coming to speak out and not be afraid to go to the police and feel supported. These are the types of things that I think are super important, make sure that, that there's a bridge in the gaps of the communities. And also the approach. I felt like it was super important for our police force to understand these different communities and open the door for communication, since it goes both ways. Other than that, I would piggyback off of what everybody else does, because I am aware of the lack of coverage, and that's really critical at this time as well. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we're gonna have, we're running out of time, so we'll give each one of you a chance to make closing remarks. We'll start with Ben Terrio.
Martinez is at a crossroads. We are in desperate need for housing, as has been talked about by the mayoral candidates, desperate need for economic development. We're on the teetering edge of potentially recession, and it's very important that the people that you elect and that you put in to represent you in city government are being proactive in those measures. And quite frankly, the, the past, you should question that. It's very important that we get in front of our housing issues. It's very important that we bring businesses, we reinvest in our marina, that we actually make Martinez a place to come to. Where I'm representing, south of Highway Four, west of Morello, a lot of people go other places. Their dollars go elsewhere, and we need to change that. We need to change that entire dichotomy. We need to, we want to make Martinez a place for where other people come. We don't need to change, we don't need to turn everything upside down. We don't have to lose Martinez's charm, but we need to make Martinez a place where people want to come, and it's, it's on its way there, but we need to accelerate that and get ourselves to where we need to be. And I will do that as a city council member. Thank you.
District Four candidate Debbie McCullough.
So good evening again, and thank you all for coming. I also agree with, with Ben has said, we want to build on what we've accomplished. I don't want to go backwards, I want to go forward. We have things that we're working on right now. Our marina master plan, as you mentioned, as was mentioned earlier, we now have that land available to us to develop the way we want to. We didn't have that before, so that's something that's coming forward. We're doing our housing element so that we can decide where we want housing, the density, the height, where it's strategically placed. We want to do housing that's affordable for everyone, very low, low, moderate income. We're looking at, looking at how that would look at, I'm sorry, how that would look across the city. There's things like that. We want to make sure that our police force is strong again, that we hire these officers, that we make it an attractive place for them to come and work. We want to make sure that we have, you know, our, our fire prevention issues in place. We have a huge area of our community that's in a very high fire severity zone, and we need to take that very seriously, and I'm committed to using funds for, again, roads and access roads, and using our CERT team to ensure that people are, understand how to make their community safer. And so I hope to work on these and other things moving forward in a sec, in my next term. Thank you.
[applause] Thank you very much. And now we're gonna have, we're running out of time, so we'll give each one of you a District One candidate Jay Howard.
Uh, thank you for all coming tonight. Um, I'm very excited about this upcoming campaign, um, and the chance to serve my community, right? Um, this is, uh, a, a great time for Martinez. There's a lot of great things that are happening in the downtown, you've got all that music that's going on, it's, it feels like it's coming back to life. My wife and I talk about it all the time, we walk down there, um, and, and it's, it's a lot of fun. But again, we have businesses that are boarded up, we need to get retail going, we need to get more people involved, uh, we need to bring businesses in, the, the marina I'm very excited about, again, I'd like to get a restaurant down there. Um, I'd like to get, uh, our streets finished. Um, I'd like to make sure that we take care of, of our, our unhoused, right? You know, I mean, I come from a, a road of recovery myself and I'd like to really make that a focus, to get these people housed, to get them some, some training, some everyday skills, right? Some life skills is the kind of things they need. Um, anyway, I appreciate your support. Thank you.
And District One candidate Nikania Allen.
Yes, thank you for having me. Um, Martinez is a city that's thriving, it's full of love, it's small and charming. Um, but for the last few years, a lot of residents feel very disconnected from the, uh, current leadership. I feel like we need leadership that's, uh, current and, uh, understanding, um, the issues that resonate with the actual communities. And we have a whole di, you know, demographic of people that are here now, we have tons of young children and we need things for them to do here. Um, as an elected official, I would be pushing to make sure that we are, you know, putting our best foot forward and bringing in more people from the outside so that they can see, um, the potential that we all see for being here. Um, thank you.
All right. And thank you to our candidates tonight. We'd like to thank the Martinez Chamber of Commerce, the Contra Costa League of Women Voters, the Campbell Theater, and of course, you, our audience and our viewers. We hope this gives you an opportunity to make an educated vote when you go to the polls on Tuesday, November the 8th. Thank you very much. Good night.